Good morning, everyone. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to approve the minutes for the March eighteenth and April first meetings.
No, do approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Moving into new business, legal issues?
Uh, yes, I've got several things, the first of which is ratification of certain claims on the Justice Center project. I'll go through all of them here briefly. First is two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to Bradford Systems Corporation for various lockers. A furniture package from Paragon Resources, four hundred and four thousand, sixty-nine dollars. Signage to ASI, Sign Innovations, nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. To Haggerman for seventeen thousand, forty-seven dollars installing razor wire at the two outdoor rec spaces. Haggerman, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars for various electrical changes. Twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, and those are for acoustical panels. So I'd ask your ratification of all of those.
Move your ratify.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, next, I've got some bonds from the surveyor's office. These are maintenance bonds for Trailside Section two A, B, and two A, two B, and two C, all for storm sewers totaling two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And then accepting performance bonds for Gracefield Subdivision totaling three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I'd ask for your approval of those.
No, no problem.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next, I would just note the acknowledgement of the annual TIF management report that has been posted on the Gateway side. Nothing other than just acknowledging receipt. And lastly, Michael Nance has a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about.
Michael Nance, Executive Director of Community Corrections, I have two requests this morning. Uh, the first, we are wanting to enter into a contract with Jackson Investment Group to lease a number of apartments over in what is now the Carmichael Building, used to be Booney's in town, they bought that building. What we're trying to accomplish is it's really going to be targeted at drug court clients. We want to lease these apartments so that we have them available when clients need them. Our clients are unable often to get an apartment for either legal reasons or financial reasons. They have former evictions, all kinds of things that prohibit them from being able to go out and get an apartment on their own. So I met with Bart Jackson, and we talked about us as community corrections leasing these apartments so that we have them available. And then when our clients move into them, they would reimburse us for that. So it really will be a wash, we're going to charge our clients exactly what we're paying, so I don't see it negatively impacting our budget. We're going to start with three apartments available. I, I could fill those all this afternoon if I needed to, so I'm not worried about having clients in those apartments. Our plan is to fully furnish them so that the clients just move in with their clothes. We're, we're trying to really target ninety to a hundred and eighty days per client in each unit. This is not a forever space for them, it's just a place for them to go. For example, we have a client right now who's getting ready to come home from a treatment center and has nowhere to go. And so rather than put that person in Indianapolis where they don't really have access to all of the services that we have here in town, they have to be in drug court weekly, they have to go to all of their treatment meetings weekly, they have to meet with my staff weekly. We want them here in town. So we're looking to try to bridge the gap of just not having housing right now for these clients. This problem essentially goes away once the Justice Center's done because we would be able to use our new facility to solve this problem. But this is an interim fix. We have some clients definitely in need of housing, and I think this really solves that problem. I guess what I'm asking, if I word this correctly, is for you to give me permission, once Bob reviews the contract later this week and approves it, to sign on your behalf so that we can get these apartments leased. We have a client coming home that needs one April twentieth.
Are, are all of these apartments moving ready at this point?
They are. They're, well, they will be within the next week. We went there Friday and went through them, one of them is ready right now, one of them needs a stove.
Are two of them ready?
Two of them, what are you ready on safety?
Yes, two out of the three ready, and then one needs a stove.
Have you, is there, has there been any basic safety inspections done on them?
I don't know that.
That would be a question I think we should ask.
Okay.
Just from the, yeah, just basic, yeah. Make sure there's no trip hazards, uh, things like that, bare wires, that kind of stuff.
Okay. It's, it's, um, rent and utilities are included in that monthly lease, so our clients will ultimately be responsible for it.
What, what's the length of the lease?
Uh, they, six months at a time, because Bart indicated that he's not sure long-term what the plan is for that building, so he's not comfortable going out past six months in case they decide to do something different with it in the future.
So you're going to sign the six-month lease and then they will pay you rent as a subletter?
Our clients, yes, sir, yep.
So we have a sublease agreement we have to create? Okay. All right, and Jackson's are okay with a sublease?
Yes, yeah, no, I've been very clear with them of, of that our clients will be in there, what their history will be. They understand, yep.
All right. Any other questions? No, I think, I like the idea, uh, I think what you're doing is, is smart. Just concerns on old buildings.
I understand.
So, uh, just make sure we, we have a safe environment, especially if there's going to be young ones involved. So with that, I would, I would make a motion to approve.
When you say young?
Are you going to have any children?
No, it's going to be, it's going to be very strictly limited to our clients, clients only.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood.
We're going to impose our own visiting hours. We've actually purchased Ring cameras that they, that Bart's going to allow us to put on the doors so that we can see who's coming and going. It's going to really be a very strict, um, so, recovery-based environment. We're going to be in there a lot, we're going to make sure that dishes are done and beds are made. And again, we want them to have somewhere to go, but we also don't want them to, to land and live there forever. So the way I sit in our office is we, we want it to be inconvenient enough that they're motivated to move on. And we'll obviously have more clients continually needing that service, so we don't want them to always be full and us not be able to use them.
All right, I appreciate that, I, I kind of had envisioned maybe they're bringing their kids with them.
Oh, it will be single occupants, no boyfriends, girlfriends allowed, overnight, not that they can't visit and have dinner, but no overnight guests. I, I feel like we have a pretty good plan for trying to keep it really locked down so that they can really focus on their recovery, which is what they need to be doing while they're in drug court.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve your request.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Then the second is just an amendment for our contract with BI, they provide the service for our ankle bracelet. This is what we were talking about last week in the advisory board meeting, Donnie. They have a product now that looks very much like an Apple Watch, but it's a GPS monitor, it secures on the wrist. It, it provides all of the same features as the ankle monitor. The difference is they're targeting a lower risk population and removing that stigma of having an ankle bracelet on. So again, I think we're going to use this with our drug court participants after they've been in the program for six months, and then with just regular GPS clients, probably after at least a year. But if a client's done everything that they need to do, they're, they're complying, they're doing what they need to with their case plan, obviously testing clean, doing all of the stuff that we're asking for, and it would just be a little bit of a step down to go from the ankle bracelet to the wrist watch unit. Again, it's the exact same level of security, we'll know where they're at, same GPS points, all of that. It's just a little bit of a reduction of that stigma of having to have an ankle bracelet on. So, you know, if they're having visitation in the park with their kid, they don't have to do that with an ankle bracelet on, it just looks like a watch.
And this is just amendment to the agreement that you had previously executed. I would recommend your approval and authorizing Michael to sign.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's all I have for legal issues.
All right. The first on our, our new business, like these legal issues, is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six, solar and wind memorandum.
Yes, this is an ordinance I drafted, I'm going to let Jeffrey, he's got a little bit of a throat thing going on, so, so people can hear better. His voice is a little bit...
Everybody says I'm a loud one, so. I'm just going to read through this. It's ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh six, Boone County Board of Commissioners, and ordinance establishing a development moratorium on commercial or large-scale solar and wind alternate, alternative energy generation and storage projects, systems, or facilities. Whereas the area plan, plan law of the state of Indiana, IC thirty-six dash seven dash four, empowers the Boone County Area Plan Commission, APC, to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners of Boone County, Indiana, concerning the land use, zoning, or district, districting of lands within the unincorporated areas of Boone County, Indiana. Whereas the majority of unincorporated Boone County is zoned ag or agricultural, and Boone County's comprehensive plan, which serves as a guide for future growth and development, aspires to strike a balance between future growth and economic development with a plan that focuses on agriculture and economic development industry, and maintains the rural character and quality of life so that many, so that many Boone County residents enjoy and cherish. And whereas new to the Boone County Comprehensive Plan, as adopted in two thousand and nine, nor the Boone County zoning ordinances as adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, contemplated or considered commercial or large-scale solar, wind, or alternative energy generation, and storage projects, and their impacts on unincorporated Boone County. And whereas on March eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, the Board of Commissioners of Boone County, as a part of its regular meeting, received, received comments from the public regarding the moratorium on the development of commercial or large-scale solar and wind and alternate energy projects, systems, or facilities. The majority of those who spoke were in support of it. And whereas the APC has received numerous emails from citizens regarding a moratorium on the development of commercial or large-scale solar and wind alternative energy projects, systems, or facilities, the vast majority were in support of a moratorium. And whereas on April third, two thousand and twenty-four, the APC, as a part of its regular meeting, voted unanimously to affirm a letter as its position to request that Board of Commissioners adopt a development moratorium on large-scale solar and wind facilities in unincorporated Boone County for a period of two years. In this letter, the APC acknowledged its continued work towards a revised and updated comprehensive plan, and recognized that the Board of Commissioners recently approved the overlay amendment to the comprehensive plan, which will regulate growth along primary highways in the unincorporated Boone County. Moreover, the APC noted that while crafting the overlay amendment to the comprehensive plan, it conducted multiple public hearings during which numerous attendees resoundingly and repeatedly emphasized the desire to retain as much rural character and agricultural land as possible. Whereas on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, a joint public meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the county council, and attended by the APC, the Boone County Area Zone Board of Zoning Appeals, in excess of two hundred citizens attended and were invited to voice their opinions regarding commercial or large-scale solar and wind alternative energy project, systems, or facilities. The overwhelming majority of those who spoke supported a moratorium on such developments and cited various concerns, including economic viability of alternative energy projects, soil degradation and contamination, potential undesirable effects on the economy, electricity rates, great stable, stability, grid stability, and property values, and the desire to retain Boone County's biodiversity, community aesthetics, and prime farmland. And whereas the Board of Commissioners believe that a moratorium on the filing, processing, review, and accepting of any applications for commercial or large-scale solar or wind alternative energy projects, systems, or facilities for a two-year period is the best interest of the citizens of Boone County, is necessary to ensure the public health, safety, and general welfare, and will provide sufficient time for the analysis and careful consideration of various complex issues concerning such developments and their potential impacts on our community, and will provide sufficient time for the considerations to be incorporated into the revisions of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. This, this part is what we will be voting on now, therefore, it be it ordained that pursuant to IC thirty-six seven dash four, the Board of Commissioners of Boone County, Indiana hereby state as follows. A moratorium shall be enacted within Boone County commencing April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the filing, processing, review, or acceptance of all applications related to commercial or large-scale solar or wind alternative energy generation, in which energy, electricity is generated for the distribution off-site from the property where it is generated, or storage systems or facilities, not including residential or agricultural uses. And said strategic moratorium shall remain in place for two years until April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-six, or until the Boone County Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance are amended and adopted to reflect the aforementioned considerations, whichever occurs first. And any ordinances that conflict with this ordinance and its unincorporated exhibits are hereby repealed and replaced. And if any portion of this ordinance determines to be unconstitutional or in violation of state law by court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining portions of the ordinance shall continue in full force and effect. This ordinance shall become effective in accordance with state law, all of which is ordained and adopted this fifteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-four. So that's the ordinance that we're considering.
Very good. Our next step is to, uh, for a motion in a second.
All right, I, I have some comments, but in order to make those comments, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Open for discussion now.
So this has been a rough road getting to this point. And personally, I don't necessarily believe this is our, our best path. I, I think that, uh, operating within our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinances is a much better, more permanent solution, and allows us, uh, better control of what we're looking for, but also allows for us to consider those individuals who wish to be a part of a solar project. I think that, um, this puts us in a position that, uh, it, it limits some of that discussion in some ways. So I'll say that that's my personal view. Having said that, we've had an awful lot of input from the public, and ninety percent of the public has stated to us that this is what they want. That's why we're here, is to do what the public asks us to do. And so, um, my personal views aside, I, I believe that because of what the public has stated, this is the route we should take. Having said that, what I'd like to encourage is that, um, if we move forward with this, I, we're going to need the participation of the public for the next two years. We're going to need help with the zoning ordinances, we're going to need help with the comprehensive plan update, we're going to need help to convince the county council that it's the right thing to do, and to help us with the funding for this. We also, uh, are going to need help in, in, in helping those, everyone understand what this actually means. So we've got some work to do, and I want to encourage that we take on that challenge and do it as quickly as we possibly can. I think replacing this moratorium with a zoning ordinance as quickly as we can is a better solution for all of us. And I, and just a couple of, of side notes on this, I'm, I've been contacted directly, um, by a few people who were involved in the solar projects as, as signatories for their farms. And I find it truly disappointing and disheartening that these folks have been threatened physically by members of a group that are opposed to this, and, and I don't know who those people are, and I don't even know if it's real. But I've been told by those people that they've been threatened physically, and I, I think that here in Boone County, we're better than that, and, and we shouldn't be doing that to our neighbors. So having said that, I, you know, I'm in support of this moratorium at this time, but, uh, I do not support some of the activities that have gone on in the process.
I mean, I'll, I'll echo a lot of the same comments that Jeff made, particularly about the, the zoning ordinance not contemplating what's, what's potentially being proposed here. Uh, and, and I'll kind of echo the same comments, that I'm not really sure a moratorium is, is the best path forward, but, uh, you know, given that our zoning ordinance doesn't contemplate this, you know, I, I, I think I'm in support of it. One, one other thing I'll add is that we're, we're here today, uh, because we have out-of-control government that spends money on things that they have no business spending money on. And the reason they do that is because we don't know this right here, which is the Indiana Constitution. If I take all of our Indiana code, just in the state of Indiana, you know, those giant paper boxes that reams of paper come in, five thousand pages. If I take our entire code and stack it here, that'd be, it'd be five boxes high. That's what everybody runs to when they're looking for a solution. All of the people's power is right here. Any authority that government has is right here. So if you want to start to get your government under control, you need to know this document right here. It's that simple.
Thank you. I think Jeff had mentioned our meeting last week, which was extremely important, uh, for, for everyone to come in and voice their opinion, pro or for. I've got four pages of notes here that I took that night of comments that, that people made, and, and is very, very important to hear from all of you. It is a, a difficult decision to make on this, but I think one of the most important things is that we haven't updated our comprehensive plan in fifteen to twenty years. We're behind the game on that. And to make it fair to everyone, we have to update that as soon as possible. Jeff had mentioned that hopefully we can get it done early. You know, my goal would be that if we can get this done in twelve months, a maximum of eighteen months, then we'd be ahead of the game. But we've got to have a contractor come in and help us with this, so we get it done correctly the first time, and not, not, uh, not just try to push things through, and, uh, we need professionals coming in to help us, so. But like I said, and, and both, both of them have mentioned how important it is to, to listen to you. You are the people. You live in this county, and, uh, and we work for you. So we have to pay very close attention to what you have to say, what your opinions are, and then, then look at that and figure out what the best direction for the county is. Not for me personally, not, I know these two are the same way, they're not, we don't make these decisions, we're not, we're not looking for something for us to gain on. It's what's the county and what's the people the county going to gain on. With that, I will ask for a vote on this memorandum. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to the next on our agenda. Is a resolution twenty twenty-four dash two of the town of Whitestown?
Yes, so, I'm not sure if Molly can hear, I think she's online. She had sent this resolution, so the town of Whitestown is donating, I believe it's six laptops or computers to, yes, six computers to the EDC, and these are to be used by their clients in the financial program, where they're working with community corrections and, uh, helping some of their clients with financial literacy. So these six computers, laptops are being surplus by the town of Whitestown and being transferred to the EDC. It is resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Molly's going to be sending a revised resolution here shortly for your signature. Molly, do you have anything to add?
Hi, Molly Whitehead, EDC CEO. Yes, this is for our program with County Community Corrections, in order for a government entity to surplus these laptops. It needs to be another government entity, which is why it is coming to you. So we will use these laptops in our programs to help the participants. We have seven in the program this time, and the participants will, or a resume will help them, um, with primarily what that is what they'll be used for for this particular class. And then we'll keep them on the, for future classes to use as well. We know that about a third of the participants in the program, and we can assume it's probably the same going forward, do not have access to a computer. And so to be able to give them this foreign skill and some technical training to an employer, that's why we have the computers.
And again, that's resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, next is our assessor for the, uh, the Luke Ariel, Luke's Ariel.
Good morning, assessor lastly. Um, I had gone out to a property that was being developed, and we do flyovers every other year, as you all know. But in our off-years of doing the flyovers, there are times that we need pictures of these larger properties, especially coming in with leap and lovely. And so I was doing some research, I had gone to a property, and a gentleman there had sent me some drone pictures of the property. And in talking with some other assessors and some of our field techs, those would be very nice to have on a off-year, or if there's something, a prime example. I had someone who sent in a request for a fire, their house was destroyed by a fire. I've called them, they're not responding to me, we've gone out to take a look at it to see if it's been demolished, if it's still sitting the way it was, and there's a gate. So they wanted to, uh, account for the fire, but we're not able to see where the, where it's at at this point in time. There's been no permits, I've contacted Zeinsville. So I am asking that you guys approve, I have money in my budget, so it's not something that's, I'm going to have to go to the council and ask for the money. Me to be able to have a contract with Luke's Ariel Imaging LLC, and he's hoping, um, I've kind of been talking with Sean, that if there are other departments that would need any flyovers as well, or drone pictures, sorry, that, you know, he would be available to sit down and talk with them if there's anyone, any other departments that might need some pictures in the future.
So I drafted this independent contractor agreement, the terms of it are, it's just an hourly rate, hundred and fifty dollars the first hour for setup and mobilization, and fifty dollars for each hour after that. Luke's Ariel Imaging is owned by Luke Carroll, he does have the requisite insurance, as well as all of the FAA licenses for drone operations, so I would respectfully request your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, auditor for Baker Tilly, Comprehensive Financial Plan. Make sure I'm reading that. I was waiting.
I didn't bring it.
Okay, well, let's move on then. Oh, no.
Yeah, this is just the comprehensive financial plan with Baker Tilly, previously executed by your auditor on April 4th.
It's just for the budgeting.
Just for the budgeting purposes.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, next on our agenda is discussion of the water pipeline from Tippecanoe County, Mr. Ronnie Merrill.
Thank you. I just got that in the mail, I have no idea, I haven't talked to anybody. I just want to be protected. Through my distance, and we have about five county tiles in that area, and I don't know how many, right? And Carroll and Kenny did a good job over the years, but I don't know when you put a certain size pipe in, how you drain it, where you go. And I'd like to be paid for whatever they show. And I don't know what that is yet. I don't know if it's a three foot or a five foot, I've heard two threes, so I don't know what it is.
Have other landowners along or around you gotten the same?
I know one other landlord who's got a letter too, and I haven't talked to anybody else. You can't move a county tile from one place to another, so it'll fall in it. You've got roughly $900 an acre and a quarter crop, and somewhere around $800 in a bean crop. And it'll generate anywhere from $1,000, $1,500, ten over five. Somebody else offset that if they go through you. I just can have it up front, I don't want it 20 years from now.
Well, this is a private solicitation.
Right.
This law firm wants to represent you.
Yes, I know that.
So.
And I don't want you guys to do anything other than the county tile to protect them. That's my main objective.
Well, I guess my point is I, this isn't a notice from the EDC that it's coming. This is Cohen and Malad is offering to help you if they do.
Right, right.
So.
I'm probably here too soon.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's much we can do for you, Ronnie, but I mean, we've got our eyes on it. I mean, to make sure that you are protected on your county tiles. Or your drainage tiles. I mean, the expectation was it would be that anything they touch, they would have to fix.
Okay, okay, I understand.
And that's what we'll try to enforce as best we can.
Okay. I can say I'm probably here too soon, but.
Yeah, and I know these have been going out like crazy. Cohen and Malad sending them out. They sent them to some of my clients up in Lafayette that, yeah, they're.
And it never hurts to retain your own legal counsel if you don't. I mean, if you have someone that you already work with, then I would make sure that they have this so they know what's going on. So when it does come, if it ever comes, then you've got your legal counsel taking care of it. Nothing against them by any means, but you need your own personal legal counsel, I believe. So you're telling us you're not interested in this? If you could, if we could put the county tiles into that and drain the water, oh, maybe that won't work very good. So that would push the water the other way, I guess, so.
I've had private tile, and a county tile, and they're too close together, but I did it towards any one of the.
Well, as always, you know, if you see something happening, you let us know, we'll come out and make it.
I just want to get my foot in the door for everybody else. One day somebody will be there and nobody will know about it.
And sometimes when projects like this are going on, they get in a big hurry.
Right, right.
They need to wait.
That's my point.
Here's your copy of this.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling us in on all that. Please keep us up to date. All right, moving on to old business, Mr. Nielsen.
Good morning, Mike Nielsen, project manager, just a few updates on some of the projects I'm working on. We'll start with the Justice Center, we conducted our number 62nd owner architect contractor meeting this past week. We did have another reportable safety incident. One of the Haggerman workers cut his hand, required about six stitches on a piece of steel, sheet steel. And, but he went to the hospital, was able to get stitches, and was back to work that afternoon. So we're only two days without a reportable incident, and then Haggerman's, actually on Friday, did their post-incident review of that. From a safety standpoint, too, we're still working on the two deep structures that are out in front of the buildings. The rain has caused us some issues, just trying to get deep enough, the water level low enough to be able to pour concrete and set these structures. So we're still finding that, but from a safety standpoint, we still have all that roped off and fenced off. Next week, this week actually, is a busy week. The FDIC Fire Conference is using the fire tower, so there's going to be increased traffic in and out of the facility Monday and Tuesday. So everybody's kind of aware of that now. The few issues we talked about is de-watering. We're still trying to figure out, with engineers, trying to figure out the best way, if we've got to put some deeper walls in than what we currently have, and try to get that water even lower, so we're still working on that. We did find the reason Max was getting some water back in the building and some of the pumps that are just inside the garage door. It was pumping back out, or kind of recirculating that water, so we did find out what that problem is. We know that it was coming in from a check valve that had failed. So we put a temporary balloon in there, which stopped the water from coming into the building and being pumped back out. We are looking for a permanent fix for that, probably this week. We have got to dig up that structure, put in a new check valve, and then replace it. And then we're working on the design of two exit and intake valves for the north side of the existing building, trying to figure out exactly where those are going to be in the new building. We've accomplished quite a bit in the last few weeks. Both the block, builder block and masonry paint mockups, we were approved. For those, we completed the reviews of polished concrete for mockups, we did that last week. Elevator shaft rework is underway, we should be getting elevators here in the next few weeks. We completed the Unit E topping slab, which will be important for us to be able to continue building, basically setting the steel. Just some of the milestones on the project that we need to accomplish is those deep structures, they're just still giving us trouble. We're still trying to figure that out. Working on the biohazard tank for the coroner's office, working through some issues there. Unit B overhead inspection is completed, the epoxy floor in the kitchen is going to be installed this week, which is a massive improvement. Drywall hanging actually has begun in the sheriff's administration basement, and also we're going to start up up on the top floor of administration there. As far as the TCP, TCP, we're kind of in a holding pattern now, everything's been functioning, working well. We've got GUTS in the auditor's office that's kind of going through the single payroll voucher, completing that. But we're very close to completion on this project. NeoGov working, happy to say that the HR department's done a really good job with NeoGov. We signed off this week on one of the modules, but basically we have onboarding and offboarding modules, they're up and running. The past couple of weeks have been very busy on this project. Several internal meetings about the implementation. We completed our implementation of the perform module, and HR will actually be signing off on that Wednesday. We have a meeting today, hopefully with Nick and his team leads, to kind of get them up to speed and understand what NeoGov does and what it can do for them. And then I started working with Auditor Crum to get logged into the system and trying to get her used to that so we can kind of move forward from that standpoint. Completes my projects, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to staff reports, area plan.
Just want to say this is my last commissioners' meeting. It's a pleasure to work here, to work with all of you. I think you're in good hands with EAPC and VCA that you have. You know, I'm sure you'll get where you need to go on the comprehensive plan that you're so, but it's been the opportunity of a lifetime. Really appreciate it, and I think, you know, just returning back to Colorado. Thank you to everybody, and we'll talk to you later.
Thank you for your efforts of coming here and helping us with a lot of, a lot of information, that's the best way to put it, isn't it? Max is not here, so nothing from him. Health Department, Doc, do you have anything? HR? GUTS not here, so now we'll go back to the last one on the list, is Nick, Highway. Save the best for last.
Nick Barb, Boone County Highway. Few items for consideration today, the first one is Project 2022-22, Bridge 162. It's on 500 South between County Route 50 East and 100 East. This project was recently awarded federal funds for construction and construction inspection. And we will need to do a NEPA document, which is an acronym for the National Environmental Protection Act. We have to go through the environmental process to use federal dollars. So this will be an ATP, so an authorization to proceed for USI consultants to begin that work, to hopefully have the NEPA document completed within about a year, so we can get a letting date in October of next year, 2025, to get this bridge built.
Questions for Nick? Motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The next item I have is a right of entry agreement, Reed Riley Construction, who is a little bit around our paving project, resurfacing project for this year, and they also have projects going on with the city of Lebanon and NDOT in the area. In order for them to use Lot 2, what we know as Lot 2, which is just across the road from the Highway Department along the interstate, they needed to store some materials. In order for them to be able to do that and have all their contract documents checked off with NDOT, they need a right of entry agreement indicates that they can use a small area on Lot 2, and that we have given them permission officially to use that spot. So they're submitting their certificate of insurance, made them work through the Bob, consulted Bob on the requirements that we needed them to have with us before they store those materials. We just need this executed right of entry.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The next item is Community Crossings Matching Grant, 2024-1. We were recently awarded funds for two bridges. A couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was the last week they announced the awards. We were awarded $237,000, a little bit more than $237,000 for Bridge 17 on 1075 West, affectionately known as Colfax Black Tops, runs from 47 toward Colfax, goes to the north. And Bridge 19, we were awarded $318,000, which is on the same road, one's north, the 700 North, one's south, the 700 North. They need similar work types. We've already done the project development on these, submitted for these funds for construction. It offsets our construction cost 50%. So this agreement is for, the initial one they sent out is just, hey, do you want to combine these into one contract? So we're going to let the projects together, they're similar work types, they can be on one contract, eliminating us and doing some paperwork, but also provide us a little flexibility during construction because it's within one contract for both bridges. They need this piece executed before they can even generate the Community Crossing Matching Grant Agreement, which will come next, I think comes your doc you signed to Donnie, once we get this executed.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The only other item I have for approval is one that came in late, kind of over the weekend, we were working with a contractor on WA030, which is the small structure replacement on 450 North near 350 West, just off of 52. Project's been completed, it is open during construction. The contractor found old headwalls that were buried and needed to make the hole quite a bit larger to remove those, to be able to make our new pipe fit, something that was probably done decades ago when it was removed initially, put in a pipe, whatever fit inside those headwalls without, to reconstruct it. We had to remove those headwalls, a lot more backfill had to be added. So these changes during construction, total amount of $27,339.27. That's the additional amount that is needed on this change order, it's a closeout change order, see yours out on the other items as well. So requesting execution of change order number one for that project.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Other work that's ongoing in the area, I've talked about since the last meeting, the US 52, State Route 47. Upcoming work, there will be a closure at the crossover. This is an NDOT project, they're adding turn lanes of 47 and 52. And during that work is going to cause a closure of the crossover on 47, the east-west traffic will not be able to cross over 52. So it's going to be a significant impact to emergency responders, local traffic, they're going to have to make U-turns on 52, so there'll be a lot of signs, barricades, barrels, cones in that area. The work is only supposed to last 21 days, weather permitting, but this could have significant impact on some county roads, 500 West to 450 West. They've worked on building those turn lanes in that crossover on 52.
Did you, sorry, I was signing documents, do you have a start date on that?
So when they specifically start this one is a little bit vague. They gave us a big window for construction of April 15th to October 21st, but there's several of these areas between this intersection in Lafayette where they're going to be adding these turn lanes. It's our understanding it could be coming up in the next couple of weeks that this one gets worked on, and then they work their way north. Again, we're kind of finding out the information. John from EMS actually brought it to our attention that they had found out about it, so we went, you know, searching for some more details, and then they provided a press release after the fact. So there was a level of concern certainly that this was going to happen April 15th. So we're not really sure when the exact start date is.
That we as a fire department got notice on that, that it was going to be closed until October? It takes that long to do that?
It's, yeah.
Right there at 52. They did not tell us about anything else.
We had to ask a little more details because the public notices for the whole project. So the people that put out the information, see a project, they put out the whole window, but not for that specific crossing, it was going to take that long. Because we were concerned you could build a bridge in that amount of time, we were wondering what was going on. So it was just the crossover work shouldn't take that long. It's a turn lane and working in the crossover. Other news, the same roads continue to be closed on County Road 100 South near 600 East. 450 North is still closed for reconstruction off of 39. There'd be an upcoming closure on State Route, or between 39 and 150 West on 300 North for a utility crossing coming up next week. It's supposed to be a two-day closure as they run the sanitary sewer across 300 North, so that's still within the city of Lebanon. But it is going to have an impact on traffic using that in that area. So we have several roads under construction in that area, so it's going to be important that people check those public notices that are coming out and be aware of closings and construction in those areas. And that's the only information I have for.
You don't need these.
I don't know if you have a note for those to sign, there's two plan sheets for those two bridges I just referenced, 17 and 19. Will be having a letting May 20th. We'll have the project will be left, they'll be advertising it here very soon. Those two projects are latex modified overlays, where you hydrate demo the first couple inches of concrete off of the deck, and then add new concrete and it's placed in the plan sheets. We needed the title sheets signed for the final plans, those can get advertised for contractors.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Nick, for the efforts on the community crossings, that's, I don't know if people understand how much work you put into those and how much they stretch our dollars, so.
It's a, it's a competitive, you know, we've come to count on it, so all the other local public agencies around the state, it only offsets construction dollars, we have a lot of needs, so it's, it's one, it's good to get, to get those awards, we budget for those and be able to get these bridges, we're extending the life, it could be adding thirty to forty years of bridges in two years.
Just as a reminder that, you know, Nick's department has been held out as an example by NDOT for how to do community crossings applications, so we thank you for all the work you're doing there. Yep, very good. Elected officials, anyone? All right, we'll move on, well, before I do this. Public comment. Now we'll go to document, document signing and claims.
We've got one claim to GM Development, this is on the Justice Center project, draw request number seventeen, one million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and four dollars and twenty-two cents, and all of the formal claims including payroll.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
And then we've got, not a lot of mail, but Marathon Pipeline LLC, just a notification letter. Item notification, and looks like notifications from the court on claim instituted by the city of Lebanon, and that's all of that.
All right, one more motion.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here this morning.